Okay. We've had. Enough of time for public hearing. Okay, others have been patient. But we on roll call. This is on roll calls if you turn the call.
Um, District A, Mr. Taffin.
Here.
District D, Mr. Bradford.
Here.
District C, Mr. Danzring.
Here.
District D, Mr. Daring Green.
Present.
District E, Mr. Howard Law. Reverend Shaw, we have four districts with one house.
Thank you. Let us stand. We got prayer.
God has prayed. Hope that for Father, we thank you for this meeting, Lord. We thank you for those who are present. Or we thank you for those who might have wanted to be present and could not make it, Lord. We actually look upon us, Lord, once again, as our city, take on our city, Ben, Lord. Look upon all those mayors, councilmen, the community that's well, Lord, which is actually give us the right stage of mind and we make the right decisions in our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. Ladies and gentlemen, we do the prayer of the highest sacred prayer to the Lord, which is there. One nation from the bottom of your heart in the deep, with the repeat and just as far.
Did we have any announcements? This is coming up to the Fourth of July. Trust me, we're glad it is. Playing a good and safe holiday. We just finished with Jim Chees, which was, I believe, successful celebrations in the parks and individuals. Are there any announcements? No announcements. All right. I have a couple things that I would ask you to try to to do. As you all know, I always like to recognize the gift talents to show appreciation and testing for others. So I thought what done ways to conclude this meeting? And by doing what I like to do. And this is a mayor's service award presented to Reverend Reverend Andrew in grateful appreciation for your spiritual support and dedication for your hometown and its people. Bruce Watson, you would receive this as an honor to Reverend Andrew, who's my husband, who's here in Texas. Reverend Andrew sent me inspiration in his field and every single day. And he has never lost sight of his hometown. The next award is a humanitarian award presented to Jacob Horne. In grateful appreciation for his outstanding service and dedication to the City of Bashtriff. Mr. Horne is retiring, has returned to work. Certainly gave more hours than paid for. The next humanitarian award goes to a lady who's been a friend of mine for 17 years. And I had to stake appointing her as the thorny board chairperson. And you can find him there, Mr. David Rogers, in grateful appreciation for your service as charter member and chairperson of the City of Bashtriff's thorny board. Where is she? Mayor's inspiration for war and perseverance. Locked it down in the office, Sam. Wouldn't get enough of this, but humanitarian award presented to one and all. Bruce Watson. And grateful appreciation for his dedication to your hometown and churches.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Bruce comes home every weekend to attend church service here in Old House Parish. You didn't know what else you never said to cheat for you. The mayor's inspiration for war and perseverance presented to monitor the halls in grateful appreciation for your service and dedication. Thank you for standing with me. There's something, and I'm gonna be breathing with this. I had to go, I broke it. Everybody doing well? I know it's kind of warm in here. There, little sign down. William Shakespeare saying, "All the world's a stage and all men and women mirror players. They have their exits and interests. And one man in his time plays many parts." Think that best describes everyone who has received an award here. And I didn't think it would be appropriate to give myself one. I have stayed the course. I have stood the test of time with God's grace. And I am so honored to have had the privilege to serve as city council member twice, to serve as mayor twice. And this service came during some of the most challenging times in the history of Bashtriff. But with God's favor, we persevered. The first time I left the city, my eight was credit rating. And then coming back, we completed many, many projects that I will not delay time, because I know it was hard for you. And for that, I'm thankful. This has been an incredible journey. You learn a lot. You learn to appreciate people from all walks of life. Whether they love you or whether they dislike you. The integrity of this office is to give the same service regardless of how anyone feels about you. Because I always bear in mind that I raised my hand to God in doing so. And inasmuch as my work is completed, I'm going to now pass the gallup to the mayor pro tempore. And wish you God's speed, God's blessings. Bye.
Okay, we're going to resume our meeting. All right, number four, public comments as related to the agenda. Louisiana Open Meetings will also provide that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments. And the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session. Whether you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members, uh, the mayor or city employees. I'm gonna ask for a motion to recess to the sales tax district, number one.
I'll make the motion. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, roll call to determine the call. Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Danzring.
Here.
Mr. Daring Green.
Present.
Mr. Hall. Reverend Shaw, and Reverend Shaw.
Okay, number three. Um, public comments as related to the agenda, I will not reread the statement I read earlier, take heed. Number four. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one oh two. This is a resolution adopting an operating budget and street projects for revenue and expenditures for the Bashtriff Sales Tax District, number one, for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to let me table it.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's already a motion, I mean.
I would go my move.
Okay.
In regards to in regards to the motion, I have spoke with, I know last year we talked with L.A. several times about tables and things like that. I spoke with them with regards to the situation existing here. And they said if we desire a table at this time, that it's not gonna be an issue because of what we have happening with this administration change, gentlemen. So I have spoken with L.A. prior to today and let them know that the likelihood that it need to be tabled or it would be the decline that tabling it was fine, so we don't have to re-advertise anything. We don't need to.
Motion here.
I don't.
Yeah, motion here.
No, 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 we can, we can table it. It ain't gonna have no personal effects on it.
You withdraw your.
I withdraw my motion.
Oh, Bishop Bradford.
You said you wouldn't have to re- re-advertise it, that we tabled.
Correct. Now, if there's amendments to it and things like that, yeah, we would, we would re-.
Okay, I make a motion to let me table. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Um, I need a motion to adjourn this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will resume the special call meeting, roll call to determine the call.
Mr. Taffin, District A.
Here.
Mr. Bradford, District D.
Here.
Mr. Danzring, District C.
Yes.
Mr. Daring Green, District D.
Present.
And Mr. Locke, District E. And all four original members are still present in this call.
All right, thank you. Um, number eight, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one oh three. This is a resolution to amend the operating budget for revenues and expenditures for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and adopt the operating budget for revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to table.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Before you go to, um, number nine, I would like to expand the agenda. And I think Mr. Green, they talked to me about this, Mr. D. Green, about expanding the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to expand the agenda to add the item.
Uh, that's what I'm saying, expansion to council.
Okay.
I made a motion to expand.
The item.
The Ogden.
Item building.
Okay.
It was on table. Can I ask me?
I like to make a motion, I noticed here we don't have a clerk. We received a letter of resignation a couple weeks concerning our clerk.
Correct. Is there a second to his motion?
Oh, 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 yeah, I second, I second.
Uh, let's, let's do a public comments real quick so we keep.
Okay, okay.
All right, well, all in favor?
Well, hold on, we'll do public comments.
Okay.
Public comments as it relates to expanding the agenda, any comments about whether we should or should not expand the agenda to add in the Ogden's permit application, which is, uh, over here in the historic area. Any public comments?
Mr. David, you couldn't speak.
It's okay, all right.
Yeah. And this is just if we're gonna expand it, we're gonna have public comments.
Sir, state your name and address.
Jay Ross Ogden, uh, eighteen hundred Pinehurst Drive, Bashtriff.
So during the, um, the last meeting, it was, it was on a agenda as a special permit item. And I've been talking with David and trying to understand the reason. And the last meeting, Mr. Bradford said this isn't got approved right out. So meeting was on a special, special permit on the agenda. He did it to explain the findings of.
Correct. So any, any permit that was coming before these planning, zoning, or the administrator, or there's three function people, any of those would come before the council. This is an ordinary one that comes before the council, uh, now to make the decision. It'd been tabled to the next meeting, which would have been this meeting. It's now been expanded, replaced on this meeting. It, it, the, as far as it would go, that's what they call approved outright. It's within the requirements, the building requirements. It's one that the administrator typically could just sign off and approve. But now that those decisions are coming here for the short time, uh, it's one that needs to be approved by the council. As legal counsel, I've looked at, looked at the building requirements, the zoning requirements, and it meets all of those. And it is one that is within the zoning text and language and should be approved as being, uh, conforming.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, well, added to the agenda first, I know. So this, any more public comments? None, you don't have to vote to expand it.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
I'm voting.
I'm voting for it to expand it.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Uh, then now it's added to the agenda.
Okay.
And item nine is now going to be the Ogden, uh, building permit.
And David, why you're, I had one, so I guess on four, who will be speaking, because I had another special permit item as well that was on the agenda. But, you know, again, I was this item been very transparent, and I hated him, I wasn't able to talk, because of lack of information that I was receiving. But nevertheless, we got it approved, we're about to get it approved. So, but I had one more that we need to discuss.
Okay, we can, we can take it up for district's expanded.
So, Mr. Green, this is your district, what's your pleasure?
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Carries.
It carries.
And I will sign the.
I guess I'll waste my.
I'll sign that building permit, like a digitalized one, uh, denoting that there is an approval by the council. And that will push on to the next phase.
Okay. Congratulations, Mr. McLaughlin.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to expand the agenda concerning our clerk of court, Mrs. Danzer, I mean, excuse me, Monica Austin. That, that we received a letter back on the thirteenth of her resignation. I have to make a motion to be played on the agenda.
But you, I thought you already did.
No, no, it's not only.
It's just the amount of.
So now any public comments as.
I second.
I second, need a public comment on expanding the agenda to discuss the vacancy in the city clerk's office.
Any public comments related to the clerk's position?
Bearing none, I think it's now proposed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously for the children, it's replaced on the thing. At this time, it would be item. We made that item.
Ten.
Ten.
Okay, Bishop Bradford.
I'd like to make a motion to reject, uh, the resignation of Mrs. Monica Austin. Uh, she was appointed by the mayor, approved by the council, and I like to before her, I like to reject her resignation at this time. That's a simple, maybe another decision, but at this time, it may be some lead as to where her job position would be. And I'd like to make a motion to reject her resignation and she remain clerk until, uh, new administration determine what they like to do.
So can you give us some legal insight on that, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, so so there are numerous ways in which an office, uh, can, position can be terminated. If it is, once you're confirmed by the mayor, it can be terminated by the by the council. You can be terminated by the council's vote, would have to vote on termination, which is, uh, the right that you all reserve to be able to terminate officials upon. Uh, you have to be put up for termination by the mayor, similar to a compromise process, the mayor puts up, then you vote on termination. As it relates to the vacancy created by resignation, an individual is allowed to resign. I would, uh, it's not a consensual, it's not a consensual thing where it has to be confirmed. It's just generally we bring resignations here to, to give notice of them. Sometimes we declare vacancies in offices. Uh, but as far as it's created, it doesn't in so much when you have a resignation have a mechanism where a person will be held over past their will. It's when the person's will to want to stay aligned with the city or appointed with the city, and the council hasn't voted to terminate them or anything, that's where the problem is.
Okay, well, I'm not. But, uh, well, Mr. John, Mr. John, I hear what you said, but I think if she had approached resignation before the council prior to this time took action on it, we did receive a letter in the mail, we were not informed that the resignation was taking place. And I think by us approving, being the council approving her, approving in form of mayor recommendation, that we should be able to definitely have a say on why she, why, or, you know, something on the resignation for the, the board considering. I mean, it's simple, I, we don't want to draw it out. It's simple, my motion is real simple. I make a motion to reject her resignation. That'd be up to the council to determine what they would like to do. And I'm sure with this short of notice and tomorrow's a whole new brand day, brand new day, I'm sure it wouldn't make a matter, you know, uh, a big difference in her current administration in to discuss that in detail. And I think it probably was, I don't want anybody to to lose any type of livelihood to something they might have done that they might not have been aware of, of course, under losing our law. Uh, when you can come back and retain your position, we want a new start, we want to do it according to law. We don't want to just say, well, I'm gonna do it like we've been doing it. And I don't want to go back there, you just want to go forward. Again, my motion is I'd like to make a motion to reject her resignation and let it go on the record. That, I'm just happy that it be that taken on the record.
You're just placing, you're just placing a record that you don't want to accept resignation because you, you would rather her just be in that position until the.
Right.
I got one information. Of course, you have questions, you answer right there. You say motion, I, I got one information you were trying to tell me.
What's that?
Because when I spoke with him on Tuesday, when I, I spoke with clerk on Tuesday. And then when I got the letter in the mail, it was backdated to that Friday. When I came up here on Tuesday, they was actually in the position as the clerk. But when I got the letter in the mail, it said that they resigned the Friday before I came up here requesting a bunch of documents. So my thing about it is just because a person resigns, they still held accountable for what transpired up in. So, my thing about it is, just because a person resigns, they still held accountable for what transpired up until that day that we received it. Because my, I got a problem with backdating something. When I came up here and I spoke with the person, spoke with the clerk, and I was not informed that they was not clerk until I asked for some sensitive documents. And all of a sudden, the next day, there was a resignation thrown out by the police department after I requested specific documents, and I was perplexed because that Tuesday I asked for, nobody said today had resigned, but then when I got it, the, then when I got the letter, it was the Friday prior to it. Now, that don't add up. The dates don't add up. So, what I'm asking you, as of that Tuesday, will all parties be still held accountable for his or her actions, serving as clerk despite of your resignation, of anybody's resignation? So, what's been done, been done, and what, really, I'm asking this question because they're still going to be employed by the city of Baskerville. So, will the next mayor be able to ask that person, even if they're not currently the clerk, but they say, served as the clerk, and they still work in the city? Because we got, we got, um, we got answers that need to be answered, and the person that can ask those questions are the person that actually worked that job.
Correct. Correct. That, that is the, uh, the mayor is the CEO, the overall chief executive officer of the city. Every employee, uh, in the executive department answers to the chief executive officer, which is the mayor. Uh, just because an individual is no longer in what is called an official position, it may, it may curtail the way that council, because you know, officials can be talked to by the council different than an employee can. It may curtail some of the abilities on things like the council could acquire, but you can acquire somebody as to about their official duties during their official time and things like that. Uh, but the administration and the mayor and the, as chief executive officer can always inquire as to certain things that have occurred previous to their coming on and during their time. Okay, that's, that's perfectly, there's not an age, there's not what we consider human resources or problem. Now, there is an issue of, depending on where you go, it's within its boundaries, but you can always inquire as to things, and it actually has a duty to inquire as to how the, the government functions and things were and things that were occurring. And I have all belief that anything that's related to a request that was unfulfilled or the way a procedure was happened, that that information would, would come to light, uh, with a simple asking.
Question. I, I mean, it just went, so was a personal action form signed for her to move from one job to the other?
Personal action forms have never been given over ten during my tenure as the attorney. Unless there is a, what we call a sexual harassment or discrimination complaint, then it gets to me cursorially after the investigation, uh, to advise whatever the supervisor is, or if there's not a supervisor, it's a, it's a figurehead. Uh, then it would go to the mayor to make that decision, the person over there. Uh, those are the only type of personal action forms I've ever, uh, been provided with or asked to make, uh, legal about. Other, other types of action forms I have not, so this instance, no, I have not seen what the, the personal action form is regarding that, but I think here quickly we'll be able to understand what has occurred.
One more point of information. The reason I said that, talking about accountability and resigning, moving to another job, because this, this budget was doing, during the time that everybody was in their position, and I'm questioning, and I asked about specific things that's coming to light today when I'm looking at the budget, that I specifically asked for, like the Dawson Park grant. All of a sudden, it's on here now, but nobody knew what I was talking about. I was accused of manipulating the system and all that, but mysteriously, when it comes down to the budget, that's where I, 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 I need some answers for everybody that served in their capacities. Because, because you resigned, or, or.
Now, resignation is not going to prevent somebody or impede the ability to ask that individual about what occurred during their time in that position.
Okay, just going forward after resignation, so I'm not really worried about that. I feel like a person don't want to serve then is up to their discretion, but it does not alleviate you in the doubt. It does not remove you from being held accountable, being held accountable prior to your resignation. I'm looking at these dates that I want to inquire about, and I'm going respectfully ask the new mayor to look into what I believe to be some things that need to be looked into going next to this.
Hundred percent, and like any elected, uh, any elected official or any official, you always are subject to answering to the things that you have done during your time as an official, even afterwards. Uh, it's very clear. You see it play out every night. People get thrown back up to the senate, to courts, everywhere to answer what occurred. Switching over is not going to cause an impasse or stop the flow of that information. That information will still be readily available and accessible.
Just like you, you served as the attorney, the administration company, and you still, if you choose to remain in that position, if the mayor can choose to retain you, we ask questions. We still want to go back to even ask you questions based on backdates, because I got some specific dates in mind that I want to talk to you about, and if you were to see the attorney, I really would like for you to be transparent and ask all the questions truthfully and to the best of your ability, as, uh, which I'm sure you will.
Yes, and as I've always explained, I have a duty to each and every councilperson, I have a duty to the city of Baskerville, and I have a duty to the administration. I've always tried to faithfully and fully give information to everyone, to those requests, while also keeping a duty of confidentiality between people that have different ideas of how to go. There's, there's five mindsets up here, and there's administration. Everybody generally wants to swim in the right direction, and people may swim there differently, but it's my job to advise everybody of the legal, and just as much if the office of the mayor wants to know about the history and the office of the mayor and how things were done, that my, my duty is to them, to dispose to them, how things are done, and my duty runs to the offices, not to the person.
Okay, I got one more point of information, then we can move on. How long does we have to retain documents?
So. Ideally, you would retain them for five years. Now, that said, there are record retention schedules that are filed with the Secretary of State that we have to get from the clerk to see what our record retention schedules are.
And what would be the protocol?
Best sound housekeeping is five years. There are some instances where two years is sufficient. Uh, there are some instances where you're required to keep things for longer than that. There are little carve-outs throughout it.
Or by checks and balances?
Checks.
When you're talking about shredding documents, what is the process? What is the procedure? Procedure is about going about with the shred documents. Did you just free will it, just go and said, I just want to shred something? Or is it a, or is it a formality or a process that you have to go through?
There is a process that you should have to go through. Uh, the process would be, uh, you would have the things that you wish to get rid of, you would identify and categorize them to determine what type of holding period exists for them that you have to keep and retain them for. It's either going to be in the law or in your record retention schedules. Once you determine the category they are and how they go, you would generally want to get a, a opinion from your, from the, your attorney, the city attorney, or from an outside place. Sometimes the telephone one still, when documents are hybrid, we will get an outside firm who gives us an opinion, because that is an opinion that comes with an insurance policy in case something is a mistake.
Well, did you give any, what I asked you, you said something very interesting. Was you, was you made aware that any documents was going to be shredded from the city of Baskerville last week?
I have never, I have, in my tenure, I have never, in my career with the city of Baskerville, I have never been asked to give an opinion or to approve or disapprove of shredding any documents. I've never been presented with that.
So, if you wouldn't, nobody asked you about shredding documents in the process. How, how is it legal to just shred documents just because you want to shred documents?
You know, when you, when you do, the best I can say is, is that I haven't seen what those documents are, those documents that were shredded, if shredded. You would have to have somebody make a call that that document is not subject to the retention schedule, not subject to, or is past that time.
What if it did happen?
What if, what if they shredded a document that is subject to our retention schedules? Uh, there are several statute, Title fourteen, that deal with that. It's, it's destruction of a public record, which is, in certain instances, depending on the intent behind it, uh, can be documents, it's destruction of a public record. I mean, destruction of a public record can be anywhere from a misdemeanor to a felony, which anytime you have anything that, or points that always comes back through a catch-all provision of malfeasance in all this.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because those are some of the questions that we won't answer, and that, that's where I'm looking at that date. I'm concerned about that date. Would you, would I ask you something about specific documents? And then I get a resignation saying that it's Friday, but the shredding of documents was going on that Tuesday. I'm kind of confused. Uh, and, and then now I'm really more confused when you say you don't know anything about it.
Uh, and I will tell you this, my history of processes is that in taking care of documents, which is one of the things that is often part, so you'll have files everywhere as they age out, and you get to the ages of old, seeing the file cadence. My process on that is to always organize, categorize. It's a pretty intensive project to do a good bit of it. Come up with what our opinion is, talking with the personnel to ensure that that document meets the listing and the amount of time that's required to be held exists. And then I always tell people, uh, always advise local municipalities to go out and get an outside opinion, because when you get an outside opinion from a firm and you pay for it, you have an insurance policy of another firm who has blessed this, so that there is a layer there that you check your map, because public documents are the foundation of government and the ability to access records. They're given some of the heightened, the, the highest burden and duty of care. That's why you have a clerk who's to manage books. You have a treasurer, all these things, because these are public documents that have to be retained. And so, the public can have, uh, an idea of what's going on, be able to have a check system, so I do not take that very lightly, and often that will be a project if, if asked to do, that is one that is what I consider a larger project, that, that takes a lot more than just a one school decision here or there, because you have to be very, very, very careful with what you do.
So, question for Mr. Green. So, the documents that you requested that day, have you received any of those documents?
No, but, uh, no, I'm, no, I haven't received them, because I did not go through a special call meeting that was going to happen. You notice, when I got the resignation, I just didn't even bother about calling the meeting, because I was sure I was not going to get the documentation that I'd asked for, and just, by, just accidentally, you know, I was just talking and finding out, and I just seen the the shred of documents towards the end of administration, it just raised a red flag to me, it just didn't sit right with me. So, I wanted to ask the attorney, and I was trying to call you, but, you know, you, so you had something going on.
And I'm sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, you all right, but I, I just wanted to, you know, you say open and transparent. I just want to say, you know, just want to find out who monitored it, who was monitoring it, who authorized it? You said something about an outside consultant. Want to know was an outside consultant? Asked about the documents. You, the city attorney, and you wasn't asked about it. So, that eliminates you.
And, and, and I haven't, I'm unaware of any outside source, uh, being hired or giving those opinions. The firms who do that are very limited. I know exactly who they are, and I have not been contacted by.
So, is, so, so here, do you, Councilor Green, do you know what is being shredded?
That's my point. You, nobody knows what's being shredded. I wasn't there.
I'm also with you, I'm also with you. Do, do you know who was doing the shredding?
That's irrelevant. I don't want to.
And that's, that's always, that's always something that I would say that, that the inquiry, if there are facts, I've said, is do always, you can always, uh, our officers, uh, can make direct, can make the point of contact to reach out to an outside agency if there are investigations that need some.
But it is, the reason I was asking, when, when due time, if we know who was doing the shredding, possibly, the attorney, you can ask them.
Well, and, and often, things, things like that, I would do an initial inquiry with, uh, with somebody present as a witness, and then from there, if the inquiry needs necessary and speaking with the administration, the council, it can be forwarded to other places that need to exist.
I think the first thing, Mr. Green, you probably need to do a formal request of the documents that you want. Even though we don't have a special meeting about it, we need to request those documents.
My, I guess my problem is that when he stated something, there's no, you got a process you got to go by, and you just can't just say, okay, and we got too many documents. I know they were remodeling upstairs and downstairs, but you just can't just go say, okay, we got a bunch of documents. We just don't shred it, because who knows what you shredded. You can say you would shred something from five years ago, but if there's no supervision, who knows what you did or did not shred? That's my whole point. It's a process. It's integrity of the process. You can't, that, that, that's the only thing I'm saying, is you got to pass the integrity test. You just can't say, I want to shred documents because I wasn't here. You didn't turn it. You didn't supervise it. So, my problem is that we don't know what, because this is a big organization. This is a big institution. You got a lot of documents coming in. And for the new man coming in, of the new city council coming in, if you don't have the proper doc, you don't know, I'm not saying what's they shredded. I'm saying, just saying the process that it was being shredded without your knowledge, and you the city attorney. And I just got a problem, I got a problem with that when you, when you shred city property.
Surplus shredding, extinguishing anything, surplus property, if you take a gander behind the, the council, uh, area back here in the meeting room, there's tons of surplus boxes and stands and things like that, it, it always becomes an issue because constitutionally that property is protected. We have a public duty to it. It, it, it's, it's not our property. It's the public's property. And so, you have a duty of care and control. The same exists with documents as it does the stuff that's sitting behind this meeting room. And you either declare surplus, you keep it for the period of time on the schedules, and at that point, it can be taken care of in a manner. But the process of identifying things, making sure they're in the right category, it, it is, it is a hard, it is a deep undertaking to do stuff like that, because you have to be very, very careful with what you do.
I guess the reason I got a problem with it, because we got about seven empty rooms upstairs. And all of a sudden, you remodel, then you want to shred documents, and you got empty rooms that you could have just moved the boxes or whatever it was. So, what made you, what was you looking for? What actually was you shred? What prompted you to want to shred something towards the end of an administration? We got plenty of rooms up there if you wanted to clean out your office. There's plenty of lock doors up there. You can go count. About every other office upstairs is empty. So, I'm just saying that by transparent, going forward to the next administration and whoever, we don't do that. Let's abide by, let, let, let's do it in a way where it does not create suspicion of doubt. Let's, let's do it, let's do it the proper way.
You always want to have, and, and I'll tell you, in other places, I've had destruction plans where I bring them to the council and to the, to the public and say, here's what identified, here's what we need to get rid of, and bring it to a meeting, bring a resolution. Is it overkill? Maybe, but it lets everybody be on the same page.
If I'm looking for documents about this soda fountain, I'm telling you what I'm looking for right there. So, there ain't no secret.
And, and another question about this position change. So, do you tell any, Mr. Jones, that it was sort of a verbal agreement to do a position change like that?
No, I, I don't. The most I know is that there's a resignation and that, uh, then this individual was going to return to their previous employment position.
Is that allowable?
Can it? A hundred percent. You, and when you start getting to an official, yes, they're allowed to consensually one-sided resign. We, we can't keep people from resigning as officials. Now, terminating, that's where it gets a little different. But as far as their will to want to resign, they can always resign, and then at that point, they go back into the status of, can they go back into just regular, what we call employment, not official status employment? And that is something that there is no process or procedure that would prohibit it or say that it couldn't occur, uh, that somebody can. Uh, that somebody can go from being an official back to, uh, a regular employee that they, they were if the position, laws of position is open or even had a creative position, that position exists.
Okay, I think we're thinking, we just don't want the new administration to walk into a hardship.
I think I've had some, some very thorough discussions with this individual about, uh, free flow of information as the transition occurs. And I, I, I believe that that's, that's something that is going to occur. Free flow of information and transition is something uh, that I, in speaking with this individual, uh, I believe is going to be something that will occur.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Green, you, Mr. Green, you requested your documents. I need to request your documents because he's saying the process is not continuing or nothing to be hindered.
And, and there's going to be some, whenever we had a vacancy in the part before where we have some people that had to step in and take care of functions. But I believe in discussing and dialogue with, with all, that there will quickly be some resolutions. And as I understand, with the transition teams I've discussed, uh, with them, they are in the process of making determinations to respond to. And, and being the know on this. But I think as far as the free flow of information, seven hours.
So we, so Bishop Bradford had a motion on the floor.
I have a motion, not to accept the resignation dated June the 13th, at June the 13th, by Mr. Commander of the Office, that third. I'm asking, well, if we, if we go on record, let the board reject himself.
I think I have a problem with the date. She was working in the capacity on a Tuesday, so it should have never been backdated to a Friday. There's an issue with that. So I think we probably need to clarify and straighten up those dates. We, we, I think they're checking the dates.
Oh, she, she like this.
Okay, so what's, what's, what's the situation? There was a motion on the floor.
I got, uh, can we see the resignation letter? Let us know everything.
I don't have the resignation.
Now, now, that's what's called the, uh. But we haven't seen the official resignation letter. And we all.
We all went in the back.
And for clarity, I think Mr. Bradford just voted on a motion to say that it's not the will of the council.
Right, it's, it's.
We got to.
Who resigned.
It's not going to be.
It may not be.
I see. All in favor? Any opposed?
And I think when you are.
I make the motion.
Oh, oh, you, you can adjourn. I, I, oh, can I give a?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, uh, can I give a two-minute presentation on my own, please?
Yes, sir.
Bishop Bradford.
I'd like to thank, take this moment to thank each and every citizen, especially this council. Talk about the citizens of Bastrop. You have a four and a half mile rate. That's what your priority should be. We should have the priority, God. What's important? Who are we serving? No special interest, no, no big shot, a little shot. I think I made a statement the other day that'll mean that you don't have to be a high income citizen to be a citizen. You are still somebody that the preacher would say, God made me who I am. Okay? And I want you to understand, council, incoming mayor, work together. Our city, heaven name, one of the worst cities in the nation at some time. I don't sit there. I'm a native of this city. I was born here. My four, I was raised thirteen children right here in this city, fixing shoes. I made an incoming mayor. At, he was at the inauguration that day, he said, somebody said, well, we got a great name. He said, I love the city of Bastrop. I live too, incoming mayor. Clean it up. Make this possible. Make it great. See that young man right there by my wife? Make it for him. We can do it. Can we do it?
Yes, we can.
Let's do it again. I'm not going anywhere. I thought I said what he said, Eric. Tuesday, with my input, my concern, my care. But I didn't think, I love can do it, it'd be transparent to one of them, they got accountability. I seen operate, I saw you. If you do that, then Bastrop will bring economics back to Bastrop. We can do that. Look at Stellington, look at Maru, look at everywhere around you. We got to work with our education system, first of all. Don't let them push you aside to identity. All these identities, you got to work together. The education, the police jury, the shaft department. We are citizens of this community. And if we do that, we can be prosperous. We can be a community that people will love to say positive things about. I'm sure you're going to be disagreeing. They're always going to be disagreeing whatever you do. In the church house, we are disagreeing. Quiet, I don't want to get along with the deacon boys. The deacon boys don't want to get along with quiet. But we go and do God's work. And that's the key. Let's continue to do the work of the city of Bastrop for the future of the city of Bastrop. I had a brother, he used to say, a little bitty town and sit on the top of him, refuse to die. Let's not die. Let's refuse to die. In Bastrop, we got great people here. And, and, and just remember this, we are all God people. We are all God people. We are all God people. Respect one another. You can disagree, still be respectful.
Hold on, Mr. Bradford. I have to, I have to give you your flowers while you're writing this, bro. You did an awesome job for us calling us, being transparent, doing our research. Even I didn't want to answer that phone. You called and just, can I say this for you? Just your head. Oh, it's been a honor, man. And I don't want to stop, so continue to call. I'm going to continue to work for you. If you need me, you know you can call me. Man, this has been awesome. And we will miss you.
Yes, and on behalf of this council, I want to officially say thank you for all your hard work and dedication. You, you drove us sometime that we don't want, we didn't want to be driven. You did, you did. You researched, you get your back straight, and that's what I love about you.
I do too.
We're gonna miss you.
We're gonna miss you. You are who you are, always been who you are, and it's done. Well, I'm not stealing this thing, Dan. I'm thinking with. Whether you disagree with him or agree, wasn't he, he had an answer and he researched it. He always made sure that we was at our best. And I just want to say that it's been a pleasure certainly alongside of you. And we don't miss you, but you know, you, you still don't get out of nowhere. Learned a lot, practical a lot. Sometimes you just have to stand alone. Like one thing I can say is this, men, bishops, have a special relationship. We've known each other for fifteen years. Most people don't know that. Twenty-six-year-old kid, made an attorney by Jerry Jones in San Onofre, one directed. He told me, help me take care of people in Ohio's parish. When I came back as city attorney, that was my goal. But I will tell you one thing, I met many characters along the way. And it's not very long when you're down there at the DA's office. And Mr. Bradford would come in, we'd discuss things. He'd always bring you something. He had a kernel. He had everything ready. He always pushed me back then. We may not always agree in here. We didn't always agree when we were down there. But it made our coffee drinking great on Tuesday. I can remember you and the rest of the soul, Reverend Armstrong, Reverend Montgomery. I can remember how many days on a Tuesday I learned as a young lawyer about a lot of the world. And I have you to thank for it. And if I've never said thank you, I say thank you now. That as a young lawyer, there was many people like Reverend Montgomery, Reverend Armstrong, Dr. Campbell. So he pushed me to research so that everybody had everything equally. I taught you one thing. Doesn't matter what you have, color, money, anything, respect, treat people with respect. People always called me with a plan. I expect you'll still call me with a plan. And I still talk to you. And I hope that I have another fifteen great years of knowing you. But there is one thing that I know about you. And I ask for a little departure from the maladies. I ask that tonight would be allowed to carry on with the prayer of Bishop Bradford. Oh, we got to say one other thing before I go. Yes, it's because you got to give people the flowers, like, and there, and it's all about the norm a long time. And although we may differ politically, you still have to say that being the first black female mayor of the city of Bastrop, female, it was a accomplishment in itself. So that's saying, you know, whether you agree politically or whatever, that was a great, that was a great accomplishment to start. And Maru was, as she would say, in the sin to be the mayor of the city of Bastrop.
Twice.
Twice. It's an awesomeness, it's, it's a great and awesome accomplishment. So just want to say, you know, we wish her the best in her future endeavors, just being the first to stand the test of time.
She'll go down in the history books.
Yeah, can we, so can we get both, Mr. Biddy and Mr. Bradford are standing over this. The job well done.
I'd like to enjoy your speaking. Let us pray. Oh, thank you Father Lord, we thank you, Lord. Lord, that you have all power and all knowledge, Lord, Lord, each and every person's heart.